In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act PL 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice to this regular meeting of the Planning Board of the Township of Franklin has been provided. If everyone will please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Chase?
Here.
Coral Hauck?
Here.
Mahir Rafiq?
Here.
Cecile MacIver?
Here.
Robert Mettler?
Here.
Mustafa Manzoori asked to be excused. Charles Brown?
Here.
Robert Thomas called me. He's on his way. He's in a traffic jam, so we're expecting him when he gets here.
And maybe we can finish before he comes.
Jennifer Ragnar?
Here.
Godwin Amalola?
Here.
And Chairman Mercini?
Here.
All right, the minutes for the regular meeting of August 7th?
Move to approve.
Second.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Mahir Rafiq?
Yes.
Cecile MacIver?
Yes.
Robert Mettler?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
And Godwin Amalola?
Yes.
Okay, a couple of resolutions. First one is adoption of elements of the Township master plan.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Mahir Rafiq?
Yes.
Cecile MacIver?
Yes.
Robert Mettler?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Godwin Amalola?
Yes.
And HESP Solar LLC?
Move that resolution.
Second.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Mahir Rafiq?
Yes.
Cecile MacIver?
Yes.
Robert Mettler?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
And Godwin Amalola?
Yes.
All right, since it doesn't seem as though we have any discussion topics tonight, we'll move right into opening for public comment.
Move to open to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain? Okay, that motion carries, so the meeting is open to the public for any planning comments that are not related to hearings that we would otherwise have tonight separately, which would be if anybody's here for Sycamore Developers, then that will have its own opening to the public.
Mr. Chairman, seeing no one coming forward, I would move that this-
Second the motion.
... part of the public hearing be closed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain? Motion carries, and we'll move on to our one and only hearing, which is Sycamore Developers LLC PLN 18-00008.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Peter Lanford appearing on behalf of the applicant. We are here this evening for two minor revisions to a plan that was previously approved by this board in 2017. This was an application that was heard by the board to create 32 single-family residential dwellings in a cluster development with open space, preserved open space being located along both Cedar Grove Lane and Amwell Road. The two things that we are here seeking tonight, one is, in the original application, and you'll hear testimonies to the history of it, we had proposed, and the board approved, a sanitary sewer line going from the pump station to Cedar Grove Lane, and our job was designed based on that. As a result of some activities and changes in the Sewerage Authority, we were asked by the Sewerage Authority to run the sewer line out to a different pump station, so what we're asking to do is relocate the sewer line and take it through the open space to the cemetery, and then there will be an easement through the cemetery to take the sewer line to Amwell Road. The second part of it is, we are seeking approval to stockpile some topsoil during construction in the open space, which is currently a farm field, and I'll present testimony as to why we feel that's appropriate. Your ordinance doesn't permit that, and this would be a temporary request, obviously, during construction, and then the property will be restored to a farm field subsequent to the construction. I would like to call Mr. Tenler as my witness.
Stand up.
Son, I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so hope you got.
I do.
Name and address for the record, please.
Andrew Tenler, 18 Lowell Avenue Summit.
Can you spell your last name, please?
T. Lake Tom E.N.D.L.E.R.
Mr. Tenler, by whom are you employed?
Sycamore Developers LLC.
Okay, and you have been involved with this project since the beginning?
That is correct.
Okay, and for the purpose of this evening's presentation, we have taken two drawings. One is the original subdivision approval, which I have marked, Mr. Clark, and is A1 at today's date. And then I've marked A2, which shows the changes or what we are requesting as far as relief, and I've marked that as A2 with today's date. And those were prepared by Reynolds Engineering, who was the original site engineer. Mr. Tenler, first of all, dealing with the sewer line, when the project was originally designed, did you meet with the Franklin Township Sewerage Authority to discuss searing this project?
Yes, we did, absolutely.
And when you met with them, what did they indicate to you would be the best way to sewer this site?
They indicated it would be going towards the westerly portion of the property, towards Cedar Grove, down Cedar Grove Avenue, into the pump station, just down past Amwell Road, Cedar Grove, I think it's the, oh, it's Amwell Road Pump Station.
Okay.
That's the way they wanted us to go originally, yes.
And that's the way the project was designed and the way the project was submitted and approved, correct?
Correct, yes.
And can you just show the board on that plan where the pump station is proposed?
Pump station would just be at the end of the cul-de-sac right here and this lot right here, so instead of now going this way, it will now be going this way, still through the-
So, the original proposal was to take it from that pump station down to Cedar Grove Lane to the pump station on Amwell Road?
Correct.
And then after we obtained the approvals and you met with the Sewerage Authority again, at that time, there was a change in directors at the Sewerage Authority?
Yes, that's correct.
And did they advise you then that there was a problem with the Amwell Road pump station?
They unfortunately did.
Okay, and so they asked you to now take these sewer where?
They asked us to take the sewer to the Bennett's Lane Pump Station. They were having problems with issues over at Amwell, and so they said that the Bennett's Lane Pump Station, no problem, can take this, and so that was ultimately was decided. There were many other iterations before we even got to that point, but-
And so now we're proposing again, just to put the sewer line through the open space like we previously did, but in a different location, and we have worked out an agreement to run the sewer line through the cemetery and then basically over to Amwell Road and ultimately getting down to Bennett's Lane?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Now, the second part of our requested relief is the stockpiling of soil during construction, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, can you just briefly, for the board, point out the area of the property that is going to be preserved as open space?
Sure. Okay, so again, you're only seeing half of the development, but this is Amwell Road, that's Cedar Grove Lane right there, so the open space is everything in here and wrapping around all the way into here.
Okay, and the open space now currently is predominantly a farm field?
Correct, yes.
And can you explain to the board why you want to stockpile the topsoil in that location in the open space?
Right, well, with every development that you do, obviously, you have issues of where you're going to stockpile materials and topsoil, because the first thing that's gonna happen is most of that site is going to get stripped of topsoil, and it's gotta go someplace. So what are your options here? Your options are, you want to try to place it in a spot where it's not going to create a lot of dust or dirt for predominantly the homeowners who are on the eastern half of the property along Cedar Grove, so we wanted to keep it away from them there. And we also want to put it in a spot that is quote-unquote "out of the way," such that, you know, it doesn't require constant moving of a topsoil pile, which, again, in and of itself, in addition to the cost and everything else, it's besides the point, is the dust and the mess that that will create if you were to continually have to move it or spotted in smaller stockpiles, you know, elsewhere throughout the site.
And so the request that we are asking of the board is to stockpile it in the open space during the course of construction, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And we are only looking to stockpile soil, we're not looking to store construction materials, wood, pipe, or anything else in that open space, is that correct?
That's correct. It'll be a nice, it'll be a nice pile of soil with, that's been stabilized with probably grass growing on it throughout the length of the development.
Okay, and the stabilization, again, is to prevent it from-
From blowing around and eroding and just getting where it's not supposed to be going, stabilizing it.
Okay, and that location is the furthest location away from any of the existing residences, and actually it butts the cemetery property?
Yeah, it's the furthest it can be from Amwell Road and the homes over there, and then also from the homes that are along Cedar Grove, along the eastern edge of the proper, I'm sorry, the western edge of the property. And then even where it's located now, we're still, have left a good amount of space to leave the topsoil far enough in from the property line that it doesn't affect any of the hedge row or any of the trees that are on there as well.
Okay, and then what would happen to that area once construction of the residential project is completed?
It'll, it'll, it's no more than topsoil that's already on top of topsoil that's in that area, and it will remain there and become part of that field as it's restored to farm, it's farming use.
So when, no pun intended, when all the dust settles, it will look, at the end of the day, like it is today, a farm field?
Exactly.
Okay, so there would be no detrimental impact to the open space, because we're not going to be taking out any trees, hedge rows, or anything of that nature?
No, no.
Okay, and we would access that, that stockpile through one of the residential lots that we are proposing in our development? We would not be disturbing any of the remainder of the open space, is that correct?
That's, that's correct, absolutely.
And again, just for the record, we have an agreement in place with the owner of the property who is going to retain the open space to grant us that temporary easement for the stockpiling of that topsoil, correct?
Yes.
Thank you, I have no further questions.
Thank you, Peter. Any questions for the board?
I always assumed that when you stockpile topsoil, that eventually you put it back for landscaping for the houses, but your testimony sounded more as if it would stay there.
No, that's not, well, let me clarify then, no, it's exactly what will happen, is that stockpile will be then brought back onto the site as it's needed, the topsoil lawns and lots and so on and so forth, so no, the stockpile will only be there temporarily.
How is the, the open space being farmed now?
I believe it's corn, probably feed corn.
Corn, okay, so all they need to do is just plant corn again wherever it is.
Exactly, yes, yes.
No, if it were going to be grassland, I might have some ideas, but corn is corn.
Okay.
Anybody else have any-
Just one question. The original direction that you were going to go, the pipeline is going along the edge of-
I'm sorry, the original-
The original route that the sewer line was going to take-
Yes, yes.
It went along the property lines of lots and the property line of the-
Open space, yes.
If the open space is going to continue to be farmed, does the new route present a problem for continuing to farm that?
It does not, because that will be, it will be a buried line, and it'll be deep enough that it won't interfere with any of the farming activities or what they're doing on top of it.
Okay, so it wouldn't get plowed up or anything?
No, 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 no.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Peter, do you want to address anything in the technical review committee report?
I sort of think I did hit all of the issues that were-
Yeah, I think he's addressed all of them. I think in the resolution and staff, staff and the board attorney are currently in the process of reviewing the draft deed restriction and possible conservation easement, we may want to add some language to those documents to reflect what the board decides tonight. For example, allowing this disturbance, if the board approves allowing this disturbance in the conservation easement or the conservation area, and under what, under what terms?
Is Sycamore still the contract purchaser?
Yes.
Okay, one of the bullet points on page two of the TRC report talked about the ability of the township to enforce the conditions under which we'll have the soil stockpiled, particularly in light of the fact that the conservation area will be owned by another party. How are we gonna deal with that?
Actually, Mr. Vignolo is in the process of discussing, as Mr. Healy indicated, an agreement with the property owner, and I am sure that part of it will be incorporated. Obviously, my client will be responsible for the maintenance of it and for the restoration of it, but it should be in that agreement that is being negotiated right now by Mr. Vignolo.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Any other questions?
Just, just one, you, you do have the full agreement of the Cedar Grove Cemetery?
Yes, we negotiated an agreement with the Cemetery Association for an easement through their property.
If there's no other discussion, I'll make a move to open it to the public at this time.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is open to the public on, for any comments on this here, um, application? Yes, please, state your name and address for the record, and our attorney will swear you in, and your mic is on.
Donald Lacoco, 312 Cedar Grove Lane.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Son, I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so hope you got.
Yes. Okay, I have a couple of questions, some of them were already answered, so I'm not gonna belabor that, but I noticed on the plan that there, the current plan has a fence by the tree line, and my question is, what was the reasoning for that?
Because long before we ever started this, that was what the, that was the one concern the cemetery brought to us as a neighbor, and we thought it was reasonable, so we agreed to do that with them, or for them.
Okay, one more time, the cemetery was-
The cemetery had expressed an interest in that at the time of, as a neighbor, as any neighbor comes to us when we're developing-
I didn't hear, the neighbors?
Yeah, the cemetery is the, is the neighbor to the, to the west of us, I'm sorry.
East.
To the east, thank you, to the east of us, and when we were going through the approvals and doing that, they had expressed some interest about, hey, would you mind putting up a fence to block your development? That would be something that we would find advantageous or acceptable to us in terms of, you know, that's our only comment on the development, so we said, okay.
Okay, well then, was there any thought put into the plan to have one installed behind the current residents that are on the west side that are gonna be affected by the new development?
That was never discussed in the original application, and it's really up to the individual property owners, when those lots are developed, as to whether they want to install a fence on their property. Most of the fence that we are installing is against the open space, and, and that's why we're installing it up there at the request of the Cemetery Association.
Okay, I, I understand that part. There's a lot of dead people on that other side of the fence that aren't gonna really be affected by this new development, but where the current residents are, some of them as long as 70 years, are gonna have no kind of barrier or anything like that.
And that was never requested, there's no legal requirement, even with respect to the other side, the Cemetery Association as part of the original approval asked us to do it, and we agreed to do it, but no one during the original application asked us to install a fence along the property owners, along Cedar Grove Lane.
Okay, then-
So, so let me ask a question related to that, so there, you know, the development that I live in, there's a, a, a tree line, a clearly planted tree line, not a natural tree line of pine trees or evergreens, between that development and the adjacent development. Is that something that you could do? I mean, I understand fences are generally not, because the neighbor, you know, the actual new homeowner may not want that fence, but a tree line might be, you know, as part of your landscaping plan could potentially be a buffer?
And I, I didn't bring the full set of plans, I don't remember if there were any plantings along that, those property lines, but surely we can plant some trees along those property lines?
Would that be acceptable?
I'm not so sure that, there's a drainage easement-
Yeah, it may not be right.
So, planting of trees, a fence might be physically possible, but you can't have, we can't have trees in the drainage easement.
Okay, didn't realize that, because wait, we don't have a full set of plans, so no, all right.
Well, I thank you for asking that question, I appreciate that. Okay, and again, with the traffic, is there, I understand that with the first plan, there's gonna be a stop sign on the west side at the end of the row of homes.
Correct.
And do you think that's appropriate for the amount of traffic on Cedar Grove Lane?
That, that was discussed, we had a traffic consultant testify to it at the original application, and that's what was approved, and we're not here, in all due respect, to revisit that, we're here for the, the two simple issues of moving that sewer line and also the stockpiling of soil. The board found in 2017 that the stop signs were appropriate, they heard testimony at that time to that effect.
Yeah, and I would comment that I think it probably is, because, I mean, if you look at other developments on the further down Cedar Grove, I forget the name of the street, Summerfield, but I mean, basically, they're, they're developments that have a stop sign off of the, and that's normal, the traffic control device that you would have, you know, intersecting a road like Cedar Grove Lane.
And also, do you see any further need for more variances with what's going on and what you're planning to do? Because it seems like something was in place, now it's need to be changed, will this go on with something else?
Let me, let me answer that. So, the applicant, when they went before the board, received preliminary and final subdivision approval, and I don't recall if they required variances, but if they did, they were, they obtained all of those necessary approvals at that time. They are now coming back to make these two very specific changes, to have the sewer line go one way instead of the other way, and the stockpile, that does require variances, that's why they're here, that's why you were noticed, and everybody within 200 feet was noticed, and that's why this board is here, is to hear these particular variances, all of the rest of it is completely unchanged.
Okay.
So, yes, it does trigger new variances, and the board will decide whether to grant them or not.
Okay, so then, when will there be a final approval?
There, there's already been a final approval.
Well, I mean, with the, these changes, tonight?
Tonight, this is the hearing to grant, whether the board is gonna grant these specific variances for the, for the plan they already approved.
Okay, I get that, but that the last meeting in 2017, it was also approved, but now there's a change in effect, so my concern is, after approving what these gentlemen are showing tonight, will this be the final say, or will the board or somebody's sewer department or landscaping or somebody, I don't know the department names, will there be any further or foreseen changes?
We, we don't anticipate any additional changes, quite frankly, it's never the desire of a developer to have to come back and change something, but sometimes it's beyond our control, our control, so hopefully, what you're seeing tonight is the last you'll ever see of this project, other than its construction.
Okay.
For what it's worth, this is not something that just sprang up, I think as the applicant has testified, they've been dealing with this issue for the last year and a half or two years, so this is not something just sprang up, you know-
This specific change, is that what you're doing?
I mean, they can speak to their dealings with the Sewer Authority, but, I mean, it's been at least a year and a half, is my understanding, they've been dealing with this issue, trying to solve how are they going to get sewer, sanitary sewer to the site, so, again, it's not something that just sprang up and they're just coming here on a whim, this is something that's been in the works for a very long time.
Okay.
Oh, and just, so, Mr. Clark conveniently had the resolution, your original resolution, so the only variances were for the size of the open space lot, and the only reason that is, is because under cluster preservation guidelines, it's generally a certain percentage. To do this as a cluster, the open space lot was actually smaller, and those were, the variances were all related to the open space lot, not the houses themselves.
Okay, well, thank you.
My name is Eric Reiner, I'm the owner of 15 Hunter's Crossing Road.
Raise your right hand, please. Raise, son, I swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so hope you got.
Yes.
Your name and address again, please.
Eric Reiner, R.I.E.N.E.R., 1515 Hunter's Crossing Road. I guess we are impacted by that pile by only 200 feet or so. The question is, how high will that pile be? Is it above the tree line? And the second question is for me much more important, that pile will be very close to that border retention basin on Hunter's Crossing, behind that basin is a little creek. Any change or pile of soil changes the drainage, so I'm a little bit afraid that I'm underwater with my house because of the change of the mountain over there, not as much as the dust, I understand that, but is that considered that we do have that creek and that basin? And then the other question, I guess it's already too late to ask, I saw that in the plan that you, behind the current basin, you will develop a new one, and that will have constantly water in it, is that right? How does that impact the, the groundwater table?
Okay, let me first speak to the, the temporary topsoil pile. There will be a detail, first of all, in the plan for how that's, how that pile is stabilized, using various methods and means of, of everything from hay bales to stone to, to silt fence that will go to ring around that, that topsoil pile, and that's an ongoing thing that needs to be maintained and, and, and attended to as the development continues, make sure that's in, you know, the way it's supposed to be. And then as to the height of the topsoil pile, it's going to spread out, as you can see, it covers about 1.4 acres, and to tell, I can't tell you today how high the pile will be, we will see as we get out there, there will be limits to what we can do in order to, how, how high we can place it and, and what the slopes have to look like in order to keep it safe, but it will be a nice, you know, it will be a pile of topsoil for quite a bit, and you'll, and it, it'll, might impact your view for a little while.
I can see it's behind the tree line, right?
Right, but it, but it, but it will be, it will be well attended to and maintained in the way that it's supposed to, in accordance with what's on the plan, and also, you know, you're free to express, you know, once there's a trailer there and people on site, we're, we're pretty good about that with our, with our neighbors, and we don't have a problem with that.
That's fine, you know, it's just the construction.
Yeah, no, I understand.
And for me, it's more important, how does it impact the, the water drainage than over there, because that may changes, right?
I think that, I think your lots might be higher than, than, than ours in the back there. I can't remember, I haven't been, I haven't been back there.
Pretty, pretty, pretty.
Yeah, I haven't been back there, I haven't been back there in a while, but that's how that would be handled, and then you had a question, I'm sorry about the basin, whether it was gonna maintain a pool?
Yes, I guess you, adjacent to the current one, you will build another basin, is that right?
No, not adjacent to the current, there's only, there's only one basin there.
There's one right now, but for your development, you're going to build one, right?
There'll be, yes, there'll be a basin that will be built.
And is that right that that will be constantly filled with water?
I, I'm not the engineer, but I believe-
But that is for me an understanding.
I think there's a pool elevation in there, I think that there, that there would be water in there, I think, I can't, you know, it might be a dry basin though, I might, I don't wanna say off the top of my head, because I just don't remember right now.
Is that, to everyone, does they know, and where does it drain, actually?
It drains, it drains, it drains off through the stormwater system, again, I haven't looked at these plans in a while, so I can't tell you, you know, I wasn't prepared to really talk about that anyway tonight, but I really, I mean, I can give you the answer, I just have to go back and look to see where the stormwater goes to, but-
Yeah, no, I just bought that house a year ago, and after I bought it, I could have a look in, in the map, and I noticed that here maybe it's, it's good for the board to know that the drainage of the current basin of Hunter's Crossing was not in the map, so if you add that on and that drains all the way into Wilson Road-
Yeah.
Up to the north, and when you go and take Wilson Road, when there's heavy rain, this is almost like the road is flooded, so if you add another drainage basin into that, I'm not sure, I mean, I guess it's too late.
Again, it's all, it's all been-
I just wanna bring that to attention.
Yeah, it's, it's definitely been addressed, and you, luckily, there's someone who already thought about the point- thought about the points that you're bringing up, and that would be our engineer and the staff with the township when they reviewed all this, you know, almost a couple of years ago.
No issues on that.
Now, actually, according to the...
I don't wanna sit in my, in my basement and have then water, you know, after the construction is done.
Actually, the basins are supposed to, are designed so that when they calculate what water leaves the site today, and they are required to retain water on the site so that it leaves at less of a rate than it does today, so there should be, if there are any issues that are generated from this property.
Okay, no, for me, just not understandable why we have now a basin which is dry, only gets water with heavy rain, and having adjacent to it a basin with water, and then probably the water level is higher, because there is, I guess the elevation is like 11 feet or so.
That was designed, it was reviewed by not only the township's engineer, but also by the DRCC, and all of those things were approved, and I'm, I am pretty confident that the way they were designed, it would require us to have less water exit the site than currently exits the site at, at the rate that it does today.
I count on that, thank you very much.
I'm trying to remember, I don't think there would be standing water in the basin, of course, the hope is that a lot of the water just sinks into the ground from the basin and doesn't run out, and the basin is designed to hold back the water, as for the topsoil pile, there's actually a divide in the middle of, of the project, although the contours are very slight, the northern part of the project drains toward Wilson Road where you are, but the topsoil is slightly to the south of that divide, where it drains toward Middlebush and eventually the Middlebush Brook, so the topsoil pile should not affect you.
The stockpile, it's really on the, as Councilman Chase said, it's on the southerly portion of the site, Hunter's Crossing is on the northerly portion, so it's separated by, it'll be separated by a good portion of the development, you know, developed portion of the site.
Yeah, let's just make sure that this topsoil, topsoil stockpile does not encroach on the creek, you know, is there a, would there be an agreement that we could, some resolution have, agree upon a maximum height of this topsoil?
I'm hesitant to do that, because I really, I, it's a good question, and I don't know the answer to it, so I'm hesitant to agree to say it will be this or that, what I did, what I did hit on that was that, rather than that, that the slopes are, you know, so you don't end up with a cliff of topsoil, you end up with slopes that are maintainable and still safe, and as far as you can go up based on that is, is what you would do, you know, I just, I, I...
Is there a number you can put to that, in terms of a grade on a slope?
You know, maybe a, well, it doesn't need to be modes, maybe like a four to one slope?
I mean, that would self-limit the height.
I wouldn't guess in the absence...
Or three to one?
Mr. Rossini, I really don't want to commit to something that we can't answer, I was gonna have Mr. Ardman here, but unfortunately, it's Mr. Ardman's 25th wedding anniversary today, and he chose his wife over you, and so he decided not to come this evening.
Would this be something that would end up in the negotiated agreement?
I think we can perhaps put that in the agreement, and we can get Mr. Ardman involved in discussing the height of the topsoil.
Yeah, I mean, it would just be nice to have like some sort of, you know, upper limit.
I, I don't have a problem with that, but I don't want to commit to something, because I'm...
I'd have a hard time seeing that it would, I mean, I've seen stockpiles of topsoil before, I, I have a hard time thinking it'd be higher than, say, 20 feet, and I mean, most trees are taller than that, right, so I think you'd be all right, but just, it's nice to codify it.
I think with 1.4 acres for it, I can't believe it'll be very high.
That's my opinion, Dr. Chase, but again, I don't wanna, I, I think we can get Mr. Ardman involved, and I'll have him reach out to Mr. Clark and or Mr. Vignolo to discuss, you know, the height of the topsoil that can be in that agreement.
Any, any other comments from the public?
One question, please.
Hold on, just one second, just make sure we don't have any more people from the public, and we can close it and talk all, all we want.
Mr. Chairman, seeing no one else coming forward, I would move that this public hearing be closed.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the hearing is closed, go ahead, God.
Yes, this regarding the timingless of the project itself, because we're talking about the height of the topsoil now, do you know the duration, that's the basis of probably that could like mitigate the height in time of...
How long?
Yes, how long, right?
Well, as quickly as we can sell the houses and build the houses, that topsoil will deplete itself, is really, is really the answer, probably.
You should be able to find a middle ground, so that it doesn't...
It will definitely be, it will definitely start to get less and less, though, as, you know, every, every day it'll start to get less as, as houses are closed and topsoil is brought back to the lots and things like that, you know, and as far as managing it, it's, it's, it's really, it's, it's not that difficult in terms of just silt fencing and making sure that you're far enough away so that your silt fence doesn't get knocked over, that you use hay bales where you need to use hay bales, I've had a lot of experience with it, and I'm pretty good at buttoning those things up when I, you know, coming up with a system for doing that.
Just a quick statement, I mean, every development of, of this size has a stockpile, so the fact that they have a stockpile is not news, every development has one, I agree with the testimony that was provided before, I think they placed it in a way that's furthest from every possible nearest resident, it's far, far away from Hunter's Crossing, it's far away from the, from the homes on Amwell, it's as far as it could be from the homes on Cedar Grove, it's gonna be controlled, as Mr. Tendler said, by, by the standards, by Soil Conservation Service, the fact, the reason they're here is just that it happens to be in the conservation area, the height, the everything else is frankly, it was already on the plan before, it's just, again, they're placing it there, that's really the sub-subject of tonight's hearing.
I think we're fine, Jim?
One last question, Mr. Lanford, the original application, the variances were approved under the C2 analysis, I'm assuming that that would be the basis for these variances as well.
Yes, this will be a C2, and again, it's temporary in nature also, because the soil will ultimately be gone, and the variance will be gone once the soil goes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve these two variances with the understanding that after Mr. Ardman has been consulted, that some sort of height restriction be written into the approval.
And are we also seeking amended site plan?
There is no site plan, it was a subdivision.
Subdivision, yeah, okay.
And the, and the lots haven't changed, so it's not an amended subdivision.
Okay, fine.
It's just a variance relief.
All right.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Coral Hauck?
Yes.
Mahir Rafi?
Yes.
Cecile McIver?
Yes.
Robert Mettler?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas? Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
And Chairman Rossini?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Anything else? Mark, Christine, anything else?
Um, no.
All right, October 16th is our next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, a move to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night.